Eventually, you know.
Okay, everybody stand please. We'll say the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands by which stands. One nation, America, in the name of the Constitution, liberty and justice for all.
All right, hello everybody, it's five thirty. We're at the Bonner County Planning and Zoning Commission. We're located at fifteen hundred Highway two, Sandpoint, Idaho. We're on the first floor conference room. We're online Zoom and we're on YouTube livestream. Now a call of commissioners from my reference.
Commissioner Reed.
Commissioner Frankenbach.
Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Tinsley.
Commissioner Bailey as acting chair. Okay, so any announcements? Okay, we have a change in the agenda and Jacob, if you would, put that up, please. Our second file, AM zero zero two one dash two one, has a flaw in the application. And if you look up on the left-hand side, title two thirteen, it'll kind of show you that the applicant needs to be either a citizen or a property owner of Bonner County. Keep Bonner County rural is not a citizen nor a property owner. So therefore, we're going to have to redo their application and resubmit it. We'll have to notice it and then the staff will have to change the report that reflects the correct address. And maker of the file.
Any possibility for discussion about the process right now?
Okay.
It's not, I mean, this is strange. It's not a, that kind of discussion is not on the agenda, but if they're talking about resubmitting. It may be more productive to have a workshop than a hearing. I don't know if the applicants would be, there's data. I don't know if they would be interested in doing that.
This evening?
No, not this evening.
No, no.
At a time, some other time. They're, they're going to have to reapply anyway.
When it's a legitimate application.
Yeah.
What is the, when?
When? Because we've done that, I think, on one other, one other file where it just seemed productive to have a workshop first and then put it into the form of an actual application for amendment.
Who did that with the RV part?
Well, I, I would think so. I would, I would hope that, you know, we could have that general discussion. Again, I'm, I'm not even sure procedurally how that fits, but let's give it a try.
I don't know.
Shoot it out the door yet?
No, they're out there.
They're noisy.
Yes.
Hello?
Need to have a discussion.
So Commissioner Davis had an idea. So. Go ahead.
Yeah, so thinking it might be better to have a workshop with the group to discuss the things because we, we can't just get into the wording in the application now. But if we can do that in a workshop, it's going to give all of us more latitude.
We would have loved to have been working collaboratively with planning.
But I offered, I have an email where I said, come here with me.
Yeah, let's, let's do the workshop.
The past is the past.
The issue with the hearing is it starts at ten day talk. We have to do some things yea or nay in ten days. And this is too big of a thing to deal with.
It's a lot of stuff.
I don't think we'd even have the latitude as a commission to amend even one word of your application either.
Right.
So, you know, it's, we're kind of hamstrung.
So if we did a workshop and then we just workshopped it, then what's the next step then to a hearing?
Yeah, if we could come up with, and I, we'll have to think about that too, because if we just come up with some whatever, better wording, different approach, whatever, whatever it's going to be. And then get that forward and I, then I don't know, we'll have to discuss to them who's the applicant, who's the words on it together.
Okay.
Yeah, see what I mean? You know, it's kind of.
Well, I mean, we can take your, what you, what you give us in the workshop and we can say yea or nay too.
I guess so.
We don't want that, you know, or thank you and yes, and we'll take it. So we, we want to hear from this board, so that, we were promised this board. Yeah, so yeah, I'm, I'm open to anything that you guys want.
So, I don't know.
Jake, so can you?
Turn the staff and just see what we can do.
We can do it any sooner than later.
Yeah.
Right now, the next two hearings we have scheduled are March third and March seventeenth.
Let's see what the date is.
Aren't you guys done?
No, it, it does, March, yeah, in March.
So if you do a workshop between now and then, we won't have enough time and notice to get to a hearing. So regardless of what you schedule, there's a DCI notice required for this type of file. So it's forty seven days, I believe, to get it out. So there's not enough time between now and end of March to get to a hearing unless a workshop finishes.
Well, you couldn't, it sounds like you couldn't even get to a hearing.
Right.
Period, forget about the whole workshop idea, right?
Yeah, to reschedule this very thing.
So what if we did a workshop and then I guess the next hearing would have to be the next mission?
Yeah.
And so.
That would make sense.
You're looking, probably looking at the folks that are going to stay.
And the five will have applied to me.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The president's legislative final, which was the planning commission, not the zoning, majority of this board's applied from planning. Not appointed yet, to know that by then, but we'll have it next time. That helps.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's our minimal. Oh, I feel that.
Good.
Okay, thank you so much, really appreciate that. So you'll get to us with us on the schedule a little.
Yeah.
Do you guys want to schedule that workshop tonight?
Go ahead and get it on.
If we can, if we can, so that we got a.
On an off night, on a different Thursday, it would be best. I think the number of files we have between now and then, it would be, it would make for really late meeting to schedule on a Friday night. So I would suggest.
Yeah, we need some decent time to sit together and talk.
So I think for that, all we have to do is alert a seven day agenda notice, right? We don't have to send it to agency that night.
Right, because it's a workshop.
It's just a workshop. So I would suggest that you, um, what, March tenth or the twenty third?
Can we go earlier?
Unless you want to go on a Tuesday night or the R Tuesday night.
That'll, that'll get us in the swing if we have Tuesday.
Yeah. We'll break.
Don't promise things.
We've got a little here and there second, Tuesday night's going to be.
At this point, it looks like it'd be the planning commission meetings on Tuesday and the zoning Thursday.
Yeah, correct. So March first would be a Tuesday night.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
It's like a week from this next to be March first.
Okay. Um.
Is that work?
Boy. Hey, that's a little tight for me. I'd rather, if we could, I'd rather have it the following Tuesday. How's everybody feel about that?
I'm okay with the eight.
The eight, they were talking about March first, but I'm, I, I very likely, I'm going to be coming back into town on the, on the twenty eighth of, of February and getting things back together and so forth for the first is kind of tight.
So does March eighth work?
Yeah.
Well, what worked with the?
Okay, so March.
We go earlier, we go at four thirty?
Why don't you talk to you guys?
Yeah.
So who's four thirties is okay.
Be here at four thirty. Check work for you guys.
Cheryl, does that work, four thirty?
I'll make it work.
Okay.
Tuesday, March eighth, International Women's Day, by the way.
We'll get an agenda gathered, wanting to be seen, you guys have a little chat, so he knows the location of ours.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
The locations.
It's either going to be here or upstairs.
Station.
We've had it before where people end up in the wrong areas.
So we'll check the availability of the.
Coming in straighten out paperwork. Regardless, he's got to straighten paperwork out right away.
Yeah, just need to reply to it March.
Yeah, we'll send it tomorrow.
Yep. All right.
We're all good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, uh, next item, did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Uh, yes.
Any changes? Okay, so we'll call those good. So then we've got all that, we'll do motion, everything else is on the record for the eighth, so we're done with that. So our last file in the evening is V zero zero two four dash two one variants, street setback. Harold and Linda Lambert are requesting a reduced street setback of ten feet or twenty five feet is required to build a detached garage on one point two six acres. Property of zone rule ten, the project is located off Sagal Road in section seventeen, township fifty six north, range one west, Boise Meridian. Are there any conflicts of interest? Hearing none, would staff present the floor, please?
Thank you. Do you want to go over public hearing procedures at all?
I think we're okay.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, thanks, planning and zoning commissioners, as well as members of the public being here tonight. We appreciate your participation and time. We're here to discuss a variance request for street setback deviation. This is the proposed site plan indicating where that proposed street setback would be. Um, as we can see here on the site plan, it's kind of the southern part of the property. And there's another road that flanks the property on that side. And so that kind of limits their building envelope and their plans that they've kind of put into place for quite some time now. So the property is a one point two six acre lot. It's in the rural ten acre zoning district. It's in the rural residential comprehensive land use plan. Um, it's accessed by Sagal Road and, um, in this map, it's a bit hard to see on the bigger screen here, um, but I just wanted to kind of point out as, as we look to the, you know, to the north, um, we can see that a lot of these properties are actually accessed by Sagal Road and not that, that road that the applicant is requesting the variance setback for. I just kind of highlighted some of those lots here. Um, environmental features, there are map slopes, no map wetlands, um, does not contain a river upstream or front of lake. Um, services on site include an individual well, septic system, um, served by the Selkirk Fire, a rescue and EMS, um, doing business as the Sagal Fire District. It's powered by Northern Lights and it's the lake, and in the Lake Ponderay, um, school district eighty four. Um, and slopes we can see on screen here are between fifteen to twenty nine percent grade. I was rude, rude for floodplain by our certified floodplain manager, one of our certified floodplain managers, Jason Johnson. Um, it's in zone X, so risk of flooding is very minimal. One in five hundred of your chance, if I'm correct, Jason? Okay, wonderful. These are the standards we used to review the file. Um, conditions that apply to the property, the applicant stated that they're unaware of the twenty five foot street setback and went under the impression that they had a reduced ten foot setback for the property. And basically the Bonner County Revised Code for properties that are zone, let's say, for example, rural ten in this case, um, that are smaller than the ten acre size. Um, there is some deviation that is allowed for property line setbacks, but not for street setbacks. And so, um, the applicant writes here that that, that's what, that's the impression that they had had. Given the location of this property, its shape and size, as well as topographic features or topography in general, rather, sorry. Um, you know, the applicant doesn't have control over that, the first property after was created. And so special circumstances or conditions that don't result from the actions of the applicant. Um, they wrote that the garage placement was logical, given the natural topography of the property, um, requiring the twenty five foot setback would result in a financial burden. It's my understanding that, um, the placement of this garage, it kind of, some of the excavation and, um, work with the soil had already kind of been done prior to this application. And so, um, if they were required to set the structure of the garage back, that twenty five feet, that would cost for, um, more money being spent and invested that they've already done. So, um, again, kind of talking about the shape, size and topography and the location of the property, um, it does limit somewhat the building envelope. And again, these circumstances don't result from actions of the applicant, um, doing some just research into the lots when they're created, they're created in nineteen sixty four. So we're talking many, many years before the applicant acquired the property, per the deed research I conducted. Um, so granting the variance, you know, is in conflict with the public interest. Um, they indicated that there's no structures nearby and that only one neighbor uses that gravel road that kind of runs along, um, the southern part of their property there. Um, Bonner County didn't receive any comments in opposition to the file from the public. Um, and again, going back, harkening back to that, um, previous map that I showed you, most of the properties to the north do access off the Sagal. So we wrote the file for agency comment on the eleventh of January. Um, Department of Environmental Quality, uh, said they have no environmental impact comments at this stage of this project. Fishing game said they have no comments. All of the agencies didn't reply. And then, um, Matt Mulder, um, the staff engineer for road and bridge, uh, did say that, you know, they have, they have no objections to the ten foot setback. And again, that's kind of looking at Sagal Road being privately owned and maintained. Um, this deviation request is not, you know, coming off of Sagal Road, so. Uh, staff did conclude that this project is consistent with the Bonner County Revised Code. We are recommending approval with conditions. Um, they're going to have to conform to the site plan as presented. Uh, the variance shouldn't supersede any deed restrictions. Um, they must apply for building location permit. And finally, um, a stormwater management plan at the time in which they apply for building location permit, given its location and proximity to, um, steeper slopes. This time I can take any questions.
Any questions to staff? Thank, sir. Project representative online or?
What was the name of the project? I don't see.
No one's online now, huh?
Uh, we have four people online. I don't see any of them.
Someone with their hand up, but there's no project representative on the, actually there's a builder, but not a project representative on the application itself.
Okay. Okay.
Pardon? Amy Anderson is involved with the text.
Oh, okay. All right, so we'll close that, we'll open up public comment. Anybody wish to comment? Anybody online wish to comment?
So if anyone online wants to comment, you can raise your hand. I can unmute you.
She can raise her hand if you're sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, Amy. You're muted on here.
Okay, hi, Adam. So do, and this hearkens back to the, um, the code amendment that you guys first addressed. So due to the nature of the text of the code amendment, I would like the board to vote on a pause on all approvals of any zone changes in between now and March eighth.
Pardon?
She's not talking about this.
No. No, you're not talking about this file, so it's not relevant. I'm sorry.
So you didn't allow any comment or public comment on the first code amendment?
That's correct, because the code amendment has been changed to a workshop.
Right, and so what I'm saying is due to the nature of the text of the code amendment, all pending and current zone changes should be paused until March eighth.
We're not going to stop business because something was done incorrectly.
Well, the fact that Bonner County waited to correct the applicant until today, the public hearing.
I need to take it up to the board. The county did not find the flaw. I found the flaw at one o'clock this afternoon. Thank you for your phone call. Anybody else?
Anyone else wants to make a comment on my raise your hand on this, on this file?
Okay, hearing none, we'll close public comment and we'll open it up for commissioners' deliberations and a motion to approve or deny the file. What year was that?
Nineteen sixty four, this flat, it's one of the old ones that driving up and down Sagal Road all these years, if you didn't realize the flat was there, you'd wonder where the lots came from, but that's where, nineteen sixty four. Four tiers of lots built on the mountainside with the vast majority of the lots double fronted between the flat roads, Sagal Road. Yeah, a lovely situation. And this particular lot has a driveway and a house, but the driveway is one of our typical Bonner County cow face driveway. And they've been parking at the top of the driveway all winter. They carved out the, the marketplace down below where they're proposing the garage and it's tight for sure. So, I mean, it is, it's just a, once again, we're cleaning up something that was created decades ago, prior to everything. So it's, it doesn't seem, and it is, right. Uh, we don't have the flat map in front of us. That section that was shown indicated that, well, maybe it does. Because I think as Chad, as you pointed out, the, uh, the majority of the lots that are south of Sagal Road take access from Sagal Road, even though they're double fronted. And the one house that was added that actually opened up that hole right away, I think there's two more lots down there that could take access from that and, and that's the only thing they have for access. But two more houses and this garage isn't going to, isn't going to, there it is. Okay, so. Because the new house is there, it's actually south of the flat, top of that Hillview Road. And that's where the houses, any new houses would be, unless that's where they divided it, then somebody could get.
This on the side by the garage down on that corner.
Yeah, yeah, it's right there. And you said, if you drive by there, you can see a parking pad that they carved out last year. And been parked in this carpet under a pile of snow.
But correct me if I'm wrong, is it the only, only setback issue really to Hillview?
Yeah.
It's, they're, they're fine, they're fine to Sagal Road.
Right, there, yeah. It's that little ten foot right there.
Yeah.
Just a little curious here, Commissioner Reed.
Turn the mic towards.
Oh, thank you. Okay, is it going to amplify her voice?
Well, no, you'll have to turn your ear to us.
This was a little confusing here. Um, the applicant states after deciding to build an extra garage on our property, I went to the city two different times. I hope they didn't go to the city.
I'm sure.
Both times I was told by two different planners at the site, the yard setback was ten feet. So they were basing, you know, some of this location, I guess, on what someone had told them about ten feet. That was, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know, without the applicant here, we can't get clarification of who they actually are. But they're here with this present application, which is correct, that corrected any law from information they got, I guess. Yeah, and, and they did in fact go through the city.
I'm sure the city would have corrected them.
Uh, yeah, I would hope so.
Ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
This is Commissioner Frankenbach. I move to approve this file, project file V zero zero two four dash two one, requesting a ten foot street setback where twenty five feet is required for the construction of the de-catch garage, finding that it isn't accorded with the Bonner County Revised Code, as enumerated in the following conclusions of law, and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion, have the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. The action that could be taken to obtain the variance is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in taking a private property.
Mr. Frankenbach has made a motion to approve file V zero zero two four dash two one variance, street setback. Harold and Linda Lambert are requesting a reduced street setback of ten feet or twenty five feet is required to build a detached garage on one point two six acres. Property is on rule ten, project is located off Sagal Road in section seventeen, township fifty six north, range one west, Boise Meridian. Is there a second?
Commissioner Reed has a second.
Commissioner Reed has a second, any discussion? Hearing none, on the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Floor is yours, Director.
It's been a week. I don't know, we want to talk about, about heat, it's been a week. We are busy. Lots of files, lots of questions, lots of folks interested in doing stuff, you know, changing the subdivision ordinance. We, uh, we had somebody come in and turn in an MLD.
We, uh, we had somebody come in and turn in an MLD. It's right next to an MLD that just finished. And called it the same name, First Division. And so we denied that MLD, and we appealed that to the board. The board upheld our decision. So I think we're starting to establish, we're starting to establish the interpretation of the code. Um, the other one that we had was, we had, so we come in and want to do a lot line adjustment. We had two lots that were, that ended up being 50 acres, the two combined. And we wanted to lot line adjust one parcel, or lot line adjust it into 10 acres, and then do an MLD, and we made it 40. And we told him that the code doesn't allow that. You have to do a short flat. And we got a hearing in front of the board this last week. To hear that, and the board ruled that our interpretation was correct. And so, again, I think what we're doing is we're establishing how this code is to be interpreted. That you can't use these tools combined to avoid the subdivision process. So with that going on, we're now starting to have a lot more meetings with surveyors and property owners on how to do short flats and how to build variances those, those requirements. So it's a, it's a good process. It's a good thing that this is changing. Um, but nevertheless, it's creating more work. As we anticipated in the, um, the, again, we continue to, to have lots of people asking if they can do this or do that on their property, split their properties, resolve their properties. People buy into difficulties sometimes, and mostly because they don't know the codes and the rules. So they, they call us looking for, you know, how to fix it. Sometimes we can help them, sometimes we can recommend that they apply for, you know, apply for something that will help fix it. But oftentimes, tell them that there's, there's not a path forward, there's not a way to see that, to get to approval on this, so. Anyhow. I, we're still interviewing for, we saw one position open in the office, area for that position. We had folks out, sick, we had folks out with family members sick, and that. Lots of, lots of stuff pulled out in the office, so. But the biggest thing is, the length of these, some of these files and the time and effort they put into them, we saw that. We saw, we participated in the other hearing we got this week. Camp Bay, that was, uh, it was a lot of time in preparation. And, uh, it was a long meeting, so I think everybody's still a little tired from that.
The B said it was only an hour to that.
Yeah. And I looked, you know, the H and the F were, yeah. Yeah. Anyhow, um, what else?
You have Suzanne's letter. I don't know. You guys, I haven't seen the letter, but Suzanne resigned. So we have now two openings, two.
Are.
For this board. Will there be two in?
Yes.
There are seven openings altogether, we definitely still have.
Right. Yeah, we're still taking applications we've gotten. I don't know, upwards of 10 or 11. What about that?
Our people, uh, because in their letter, they would specify which commission.
No, some haven't, but I've gotten phone calls from them saying that they would prefer to be on this commission, so.
Is it 10 or 11 in addition to us, or including us?
We're getting there.
So potentially, appointments would be made, obviously, prior to.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, as we get towards the end of February, we'll, we'll probably, I'll put it on the agenda, I mean, the board on March 8th, and so I'll put it on that agenda.
Okay, so, uh, switching over to comprehensive plan stuff. Obviously, we're not gonna start anything of a robust nature until the new setup.
I'm, I'm sure you have this.
Is this on?
Should be. In the show screen.
Click to access. Yeah, I'll do that in a second. Somebody's got the right cues up here, it's good. So, so Dawn, like I said, you probably are aware of this. I just, I read this again today. I was looking for, I was looking for something else, but.
You gotta keep reading it every day, like for breakfast.
I know, I know.
There's a lot in there.
There is. But I just, I just thought I'd bring up and show you that I think we're on the right. You know, as part of the planning process, planning or zoning commission shall provide for citizens' meetings, hearings, surveys, other methods to obtain advice on the planning process, plan, and implementation. And we've done that with the sub-area plans. And then the commission may also conduct informational meetings, consult with public officials, agencies, public utilities companies, right, civic educational, professional, and other organizations. So, so that process is, in process, yeah. Yeah, doing some of those things, and so, um, I just wanted to bring it up to show you that.
Yeah. No, I've been, I've been cooking off of that menu, for sure, uh, on behalf of the commission, so.
Yep.
So, the next sentence is a very interesting one as well. Part of the planning process, the commission shall endeavor to promote the public interest in, in understanding of the commissioner's activities. That's huge. And I, I see the evidence of that, because whether it was what the woman's put together, or 7B, when they come in on one of those issues, they first commend us for doing our job, that we're volunteering to do. So, there's already that understanding. That, that wall was broken down. And I think more and more so, that's something else I'd like to concentrate a little bit on, in our time that we spend on revising their comp plan. There's some, comp plan isn't exactly a coffee table document, but we can make it that. Have it be something that people read. But, yep.
You know, and that's, it's, it's the whole interpretation of the comprehensive plan, understanding that it's, it's just like those documents that are out there in the hallway. It, it came from folks like us. And we sit here and we try to defend that on a bi-weekly basis, until you can show that the, the makers of that, which are citizens, probably your mom was there too, had to put that there.
That was written, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm not gonna take heat for that next time. But, the, the makers are the people here, you know, I mean, and so, it's, so when we we elect somebody, it's important that that person that we're electing will also stand up for the comp plan and defend it, along with the other documents that people like you and me, and the folks that came before us wrote. And, uh, I, I can, I can see their passion in what they're trying to do. We have passion in it. Of course, the developer has passion and concrete intent, so. We better find balance. And I think we're on the right track.
Yep. And concentrating on this for the last, personally, for the last eight months and, and more, you know, I'm, I'm putting all kinds of thoughts together and looking for more and more ways to make the document efficient and effective and more concise. So, I've got a lot of thoughts and pass on. As we get together, that first meeting of the zoning, of the planning commission, we have to chart a course to do what we're supposed to do. Talk about the overall change, or any changes that look like could be made right up front in certain wording that are going to make a back to change. But, rather than, I don't know, rather than getting into that now, any of those things in the next month and a half. Maybe you started bringing them up in our discussion time here. It's not even a workshop, so. Lot to consider. So you started looking into the numbers that you talked about last week or two weeks ago, that you're getting numbers on all this stuff? Um, are you working with GIS to do that, or you yourself, or is, is it? Because you talked to Chad a little bit about it.
So, it's the, the, it's the list that he had, and so basically what I did was, the list that he used to make that map. To make the maps that he had. So I just took those and sorted them by, uh, you know, took out all the US government, Forest Service, State Idaho, Fishing Gains, state fishing, you know, all those. I, I took all of those ownerships out of the map. And it took out, I mean, I have it, it took out, uh, you know, 1.2 million acres. And so, so I'm down to, I'm down to roughly about 20% private property in Bonner County.
20%?
That's not, that's not, that takes out the commercial timber.
Okay, that's a difference. It's about, it's right around 39%, is what I got, for private ownership in the unincorporated county. But, then if you, yeah, if you take out the vast amount of acreage that, and John Hancock and so forth. Basically, I wonder if you could take out anything that's presently zoned, uh, the forest 40.
Oh, yeah, let me sit down and pull this up.
It's that.
You'll find this interesting.
So then, okay, so that's gonna be a number that's gonna show, and then if we had within that data set then, so here's the property, and tell how many of those lots, parcels rather, in lots have a dwelling, based on the accessory records, and therefore how many don't. And then, a subset of that is, okay, the ones that don't, how many of those are zoning size or larger in the zone? Implying that they could be for the subdivision, just as it is.
So, so here's, this is what's amazing, is forest 40, there's 216 lots, there's 1,200 acres. It's zone forest 40. Yeah, after you take out commercial timber, you know?
Oh, okay.
Take that out. Yeah, yeah, there, so.
Oh, I see, the 216 comes out of the forest 40.
Yeah, this is what's left after, this is what's left after you take all those out. And so 32,000 parcels, 342,000 acres, uh, which is that 30% you're talking about. And then, uh, when we, when we sit down and start to, you know, I looked at, I looked at lots of things. These are, these are all the substandard parcels in, in the zoning.
Oh, good.
Yeah, 13,000 substandard parcels.
Yeah.
So.
Pretty telling numbers.
And then, and then there's, there's 46,000 acres that are double lot size minimum or greater.
There's the stock.
And so, yeah, so, in the five acre zone, that's nine and a half acres of water.
So can that be broken down too? You know, here's, here's, here's that representation in, well, it could be created, but, okay, that's just, you just resolved.
Yeah, and then I, then I took out 25% for topography and roads.
Yep, it might be, it might be instructive to see some of that 46,000 acres. Um, how much is in each zone that qualifies for that?
Well, this is, this is how much is in each zone that qualifies for double lot size minimum.
But it's all of this. Right, but I'm saying, just because, you know, people are saying, uh, we're concerned about further breaking down lots that are in the AF 20, in the AF 10, in the, in the 5, in the rural 5, the rural 10. So if we could break it down for that even, just to say, well, you know, here's the, here's the, uh, the land stock in, in, uh, rural 10.
It looks like he's got that.
Is it there?
Yeah, over on the left, look at.
Oh, rural 10, okay, that's rural 10, 35.
Yep.
And rural 5, 46.
He's got it broken out by the 35.
Oh, I see, oh, I see.
Yeah, it's all broken out by zone. Yeah, the blanks are the ones that are, you know, I mean, minimal.
Right.
Right?
Okay, so it's already good, good.
Yeah.
So that's, uh, yeah.
So what's interesting is there's a bill at the state right now to exclude 28 acre subdivisions.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah.
There are other counties other than us that are extremely worried about that.
Meaning, what, what do you mean, say, well, not permit?
So, so we can, right now, counties can define a subdivision as anything we want.
Okay.
And, and the state's looking to pass a bill that's gonna say that you can only regulate rural 28 acres.
Long term.
Yeah, so, it's basically, they're saying that if you split into 28 acre lots, it's not considered a subdivision.
Oh, really?
Which we already do that. But in counties like, you know, in some of these other counties where farming and agriculture is huge, they're, they're starting to see the farmer's work down pretty fast. So they're really worried about that. And, and it's amazing, listening to these other county planning directors, the problems they have with continuing to set MLDs using, you know, two tools together to avoid the subdivision. I'm like, you guys have problems with that? No way.
It's rampant. Yeah, okay, good. The other thing I've been thinking, so, as I see it, Bonner County's attempt to address the affordable housing issue partly was an ADU and two permanent loans.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
Yep.
So how much have people taken advantage of it? How many of those are out there? How many ADUs? How many? There it is.
So 75 RV dwelling units this year compared to 20 last year, and 117 ADUs compared to 52 last year. So we're at, we're at 850 residential dwelling units, roughly? Out of, yeah, out of 17, 1600 permits, whatever.
Right.
1700 permits.
Yeah. So, good, so that's the numbers.
Yep.
So we can start, start chewing on these numbers.
Jason's the only thing that has remained stagnant.
It's a lot of records.
Yeah, a lot of records. That is, it's stark.
We got a question from the gallery.
Yeah. When I was on this board, I always came almost every me and telling you how many parcels, what the median price was.
Yeah.
It's, um, it's down to about 47 single-family homes, middle market, inactive. 47 county wide, that includes incorporated cities. If you go ahead and take out those incorporated cities, there's 18 county property. Single-family homes are market active right now. I think this was as of Monday. Uh, but that median price is over 800,000. And, you know, it's interesting, because the very first thing you know, you pull up, uh, LUPA 6507. But if you pull up 6508, you know, it says, you know, the purpose is to go ahead and, try to address all income brackets. And that's, that's pretty important to do. It's the very first thing we're instructed to do.
Yeah. And I, again, I, you know, the ADUs and the, that's an attempt. I don't know what else. You know, and there's, there's cluster, cluster development available. You know, and there's, there's cluster, cluster development available, which hasn't been used at all very, very seldom. There's few Ds that could end up with that, maybe. But the problem is, people are, are, if they get into those things, they're not building affordable housing. They're just going full tilt, plus the fact, good, nice, like, whenever I walk through Home Depot, I gotta put blinders. Grab my wallet real hard, don't, don't you dare get out of my car. Yeah, it's crazy. Twenty dollars for a fourteen foot two by four? Twenty one, not low, one. Think about building anything with that kind of prices. And spend a half a million dollars to build a twelve hundred square foot brand? Or an A D U? Or a nine hundred square foot A D U?
And that brings us to also, because I see it also addresses mobile parks. I talked to Segal down there and I've asked them, you know, for the last three years, what kind of vacancy about? She did, she's not.
None. That sign always says no vacancies.
There, there is none.
And. Not above across the road, maybe it's the same.
Yeah, it's the same.
I see a number of transit units home. Advertising on these parts.
So I, yeah, I don't know, without a good part of discussion about what could be done. I'm not sure there's anything else that the county could do.
There's not.
The cities, the cities can, can hit it hard.
Yeah.
You know, and, and they gotta choose to, and make a real progressive move to do that. It's not something that just fits.
Well, somebody's got, it's, something's gotta be addressed somewhere. When you say those, so the highway department is, is, is labeled Segal as a urban area now or something like that?
Well, that's been that way since two thousand eight.
Well, maybe so, but it's definitely being talked about a lot more.
Yeah.
Around us, and so. Again, those, at some point, somebody's gotta do something, either incorporate you know, Sam Quinn's gotta, you know, address, somebody's gotta address sewer somewhere, expansion.
Or not.
Or not.
And if it's not, then, no, you just, you're not gonna have the dense areas, the urbanizing areas. In fact, it's comical that, there's another article somewhere that gets recently, some name of it. You keep talking about the urbanization of areas. What are you, what are you seeing exactly? What do you define as urban?
Well, that's an interesting thought. I mean, because you go, you.
So all this, so the short, the minor land division process, hundred ninety six M L Bs created, six hundred lots or just over six hundred lots?
Jed, you're gonna be, you guys aren't working Monday, right?
No.
Yeah, Monday's a holiday.
Okay. And then I'm, I'm in Colorado the rest of the week, so.
Okay, sounds good. So all the subdivision processes together, we created seven hundred and fifty lots.
Yeah.
Right? In the county, and so seven hundred and fifty lots, and, and that's why I did this analysis. That's why I messed this all up. Whereas, you, you know, if you took out twenty five percent, like I said, you end up with seventy seven thousand parcels in your current zoning. And I get that that's an unrealistic number because Alpine Village is fifteen thousand parcels. Right? So I mean, I get that that's probably unrealistic, but nevertheless, I mean, that's a hundred years, it's seven hundred and fifty a year.
So. The people that are walking around saying there's no more land in Bonner County, you're not looking. Now, the other part is, that's how many parcels are out there.
Yeah.
It takes a willing seller or a, or a less than willing, but gotta do it seller to put that on the market, otherwise it's just gonna sit there for another thirty, forty.
Yeah, yep.
And there's people that what would be super interesting is to then look at those parcels that are of size and so forth and see if they're resident owners or not. It's more tendency that you're, well, I can't even say that because looking at, at deed transfers of the last two years, there's an awful lot of people who live in some other place that own the property and sell it to somebody from some other place. How they're marketing it, who knows? We're mal, some website, I don't know. That's a, that's kind of a always been in this county scenario too. Lot of out of area ownership.
So then, so that number up there, so last year, we took a hundred and seventy nine files to a public hearing. So, I mean, sorry for the mistake tonight. We could have caught that earlier. We miss things once in a while. Kind of a hundred and seventy nine, I don't know if that's happened very three or four times today. Is what it is. Yep.
And, and even if that had been correct, if that had been the, you know, the bonus were the applicants, which they could have been. That would have been a hard one because there's, there's just things that could be changed, but we couldn't. I don't think we had any authority to change a single word in what they proposed.
We'll work it out for a shop.
Yes, so that's, I, I.
So, so you're saying is we've ended up in a good spot?
Yeah, yeah, it would have been, it would have been a difficult hearing, if not impossible to get to this.
Yes, I forgot, you threw yourself around the class.
Thank you.
No, I, I'm sure I've done.
I had one question. Um, under suburban, it's a three, three thousand potential parcels. Was that taking all the codes all the way down?
Yeah, that's ten thousand square foot lots.
Yeah.
Something purchased by you. It, it, it's gonna require urban services, right?
Those numbers.
So, so those numbers, they, in those, in the recreation and the there's some folks that have got to make some, uh, some decisions, the current subject or sewer districts. They've got some decisions. I mean, pretty ponderay sewer district is getting pressure not from us, it gets pressure from ponderay. I mean, ponderay is the pressure to build in ponderay is huge. So.
Well, could me, could me.
Yeah, and just outside could be as well, so there's some there's some stuff there.
I mean, you've shown that there's, it's found on the suburban side to just triple county population with urban services.
Yeah.
The suburban alone, triple this county population.
Yeah.
So it's not really a zoning problem. Service problem.
Which is why.
That would become a roads problem.
Well, we don't know, for sure, right? They could probably handle another ten thousand people.
Well, I'll just go there for coffee in the morning, we'll do a traffic.
They just redid their water system out there, right, for sure?
Yeah, they've just got done with their, their water plant. Yeah.
We need a regional traffic designer.
No, no, you need, you need money.
Oh. Just drive around.
All the trouble spots are where the county roads meet the state highway.
At that city county meeting, it was interesting, because Road Bridge talked about how Clagstone Road for or some of those roads out in that area had gone from three hundred road count to eight hundred.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's certainly
Yeah.
Uh, believable just from what's been going on. You know, when I talk to people down there, they just talk about the ramping growth, seeing it everywhere, new houses everywhere in the woods. I don't think we can, you know, down in Clagstone and, and Blanchard area and stuff, and there have been a lot. Growth is somewhat in the eye of the hobo.
We should probably.
Making yesterday, it's got somewhat, now it's rampeds.
But you look at the northbound traffic process there, that quarter hour setting in the morning.
Yeah.
Where's all that traffic?
Into town, because you, you look at the sled coming into town and going on the byway, and it's about sixty fifty.
So I wonder what the traffic counts are. Talking about traffic counts, what they are before, if the byway wise.
Yeah.
I'm. Well, at the start.
I thought it, I thought it's the other, Lake Shore Drive, it was eighteen thousand and then into Segal, it was down the system or something.
Those are about right. I, but they'll pull the numbers for the next meeting.
I'm not the total of that, the more that, do they have time breaks on those?
Well, if there's a permanent counter, there, yes, otherwise they're just escrowed. So there's a permanent counter on the byway, there's permanent counters at, at Fifth and March. And that's it, then there's a permanent counter way north, like eight miles north of San Point. And you get hourly in, in direction distribution. And there's one six point eight miles east of, of ninety five on two hundred. So it's, it's just past Coleman Coe. There's, you know, through the.
I thought they moved, they wanted to start it down in McLean, no? Is it still out there by seven seven?
Yeah, well, it's out of Coleman Coe, just that hole.
Is it? The counter, not the weather store?
No, it's, yeah, there is no, and unfortunately, there isn't one on Highway Two anyway, permanent counter. There should be, I, I caved for that ten years ago, we didn't go anywhere. Anyway, I can pull those numbers and make up a little report for next time.
It'd just be.
Just to, just to start looking.
What, what comes across that reasoning numbers?
Yeah. And it is, the, the interesting thing is, I did look at the numbers, uh, for two hundred and for ninety five last week. And with COVID, there was a definite decline, especially in twenty twenty, the numbers dropped way off. Twenty one, they came back somewhat. But twenty, twenty, twenty one numbers. Uh, and so far, so far in twenty two, we're eight hundred to a thousand a day over two thousand nineteen. Almost everyone. And that, I'm, whoa, you know, twenty nineteen, everything was normal. And all of a sudden, yeah, so it's got to be growth.
I think it's growth.
Well.
Well, people came and they stayed and they never went home.
We're seeing they came back, right? Cause they came down, roam around their states.
Yeah.
They came over here to their second home.
You know, we don't. And that doesn't, one of those traffic counts are taken.
Well, the permanent counters, they're going. The other ones, the crew come up, you know, once a year, if they're going to come up here, you see the truck up here doing counts. I think it's in August or September, they come up and do the local. So they'll do the interface, or for instance, like, they do division and then, uh, ball. And then back on, on the boyer, cause that's a kind of an interconnection between the state system. But all the rest of the cities, they're not counted by the state. A lot of the county roads are, but, and so you can, there's a, on the I T V website, there's a map you can go to and you can click on a road and tell you the one. But unfortunately, you keep walking down that road and the line stays the same all the way down. I keep challenging the, the counter people down there, saying, well, that's the best we can do, you know, and help our neighbor.
I think from springtime, when the riverway.
Oh, yeah.
Border opens up and you put five hundred dump trucks and concrete trucks back on the road.
Yeah. Yeah. How much more rocketing on haul out to the, to the log yard off of two hundred? I'm gonna say they haul out for weeks and weeks and weeks.
I've heard some big.
Lots of rock going, just, just, just constant trucks.
The water off the bottom granite hill, you know?
Yeah, so, um. Oh. One thing that we're gonna have to have some serious talks, and I've got, I've talked with Selkirk Fire Chief Gilcrees. And I put in an email out to the West Fondre Chief. And so Selkirk is gonna cover Segal and West in their bottom. But I wanna talk with the other chiefs around about the wildfire urban interface. You know, what do they recommend? It's not any reservation, what do they recommend? As far as how that could be set up? Yeah. People showing up. Cause that's, that's a huge issue, and it, it needs to be addressed fully. You know, at some appropriate place in the comprehensive plan. As to how to deal with. Deal with the subject, come up with goals, and then the code can reflect those if and when misses. And that's the whole thing about content. Do your analysis and the components. Come to conclusion, write goals from that. And then leave alone, and then get picked up by the, by the zoning. So let's help these folks out. Are you guys here for one of the land use cases?
No, I just barely heard about the planning and zoning things that, that I haven't. But I, I know I'm late, but I didn't know about it until about ten minutes.
Okay, so. So, so were you here for the text amendment one?
That's what I.
The title twelve, okay. There was a, a flaw in the application, so we couldn't hear it tonight.
Oh.
And we, we scheduled that group to come in, in a workshop format, which is far better. For getting things understood and all. On March Tuesday, March the.
Fourth thirty.
Four, four thirty?
Four thirty.
Four thirty.
Well, that's where it was, so.
Yeah, yeah, and, but that's when, when we could meet with that group and then this group.
Yeah, it's an important thing, I mean, it's just two days ago, I got a letter that said, uh, rezoning some land right by my house. So. I mean, about ten years ago, I would have said about it. Yeah, a bunch of us, the county had re-zoned, a bunch of the land out there, hired this. And a bunch of us all got to get hired and it's.
So they, they didn't, they didn't take the public comment, so.
So, yeah.
Probably shouldn't.
Yeah, sure, it's not worth it.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I will, well, I can't come.
Especially if you're talking about future files. You could, you could submit a public comment to the workshop or something, there'll be, there'll be, there'll be a meeting once the workshop is over with, it's not a done deal once that happens, so.
Yeah, then it'll have.
You still have a chance to.
Put into the form of, of an ad to the code.
Great, cause then my neighbors, except me, actually got the letter, so.
Yeah, yeah. Other thing we're working on.
Sorry, thank you for coming.
Oh, yeah, trying to focus about here. Appreciate that.
Okay. Oh my God, what's your question? We asked, we, we did ask the board to hire a county supervisor, they approved that on Tuesday. And then we did ask for, well, we've talked about upgrading our public facing software. And so I anticipate now in, in, in front of the board in a couple of weeks. Where the public have access to some of the stuff that we should. No, 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 we're talking about our building improvement process. Right now, it's you, you get online and you fill out a survey in Google, basically, we get a, we get a form. And then we have to enter that into our planning software, so the public facing planning software would be the, the applicant can actually get into the software and fill out the application. And then we're not having to retype. And we could use that, I assume we could use that for our land use process as well. But then we're not having to retype all that. I mean, that's why we, that's why we don't work with the public on finances, because we're not people doing all that pain for. I mean, a hundred, over a hundred G O P's up in the shares. You know, it's just still busy.
Yeah.
The, uh, what was it, Dollar Store in Segal, is that going to go by their saddle, or is that gonna go across the street?
Segal's on that, not over by. Over by Implement.
Oh, it's on the Implement side?
Yeah.
So, maybe someone has bought that piece behind Jitters to develop that.
I, I.
Yeah. Yeah. How many more houses is gonna be built down the hole?
Well, it is kicked out, it can go six, three.
Three more, there's what, four down there now? Down the field.
Yeah, that's all. Yeah, that's all.
Here, I'm here, we're down those 70s.
Yeah. Yeah, people, they're fantastic. Really, what I find really interesting, talking with Geraldine, obviously, the day before, Lewis is. All the lots that are stacked up against the railroad and Golden Meadows. Now, there's the big burbs there and everything, but still, they weren't, one of these are lots, they're right there. I think the last one is sold now, but she said.
It's the train.
Yeah. And the train goes across the jungle. Yeah, that's it.
Done?
Yeah.
Okay, 6:38, this meeting is continued to March 3, 2021, there's 22, excuse me. 1500 Highway 2 San Point, Idaho will be in the first floor conference room. It's 6:30.